We have three of the, if you think of five quadrants, we have three of them covered. We don't have northeast and we don't have southeast, a person from that area that's willing to help. So, one of the possibilities, I find it important to, what are we about? What's our mission, overall mission? What's that, what can be done there? And so I went to the American Promise website and chose the mission and vision of American Promise. So you'll see here, they started, I thought it was interesting, they started on that page, on American Promise. They started with what they called "The Problem." Would someone be willing to read the problem? What is the basic problem of, that we're facing as a group? Who would be willing to read?
I'll read, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
The problem. The legally granted right to unchecked political spending by corporations, unions, special interest groups, and wealthy individuals is silencing the voices of citizens and corrupting our ability to freely and fairly elect a representative government of, by, and for the people.
Yeah, right. Yeah, silencing, overwhelming the voices, yeah. Wow. Then they say, okay, that's our problem. Well, then what's our mission? What are we, why do we exist really? Who'd be willing to read that segment?
Oh my, I'll read it.
Thanks Elaine.
Okay. "American Promise" exists to empower, inspire, and organize Americans to win the 28th Amendment to the Constitution. The lasting reform will rebalance our politics and government by putting the rights of individual citizens before the privileges of concentrated money, corporations, unions, political parties, and super PACs.
Yeah. Great. Yep. The 28th Amendment, that's a big challenge for us, but that's why we have five and a half years. The goal is to have it done by 4th of July, 2026, to have this work done. And who would be willing to read the first paragraph of the vision? So you have a mission and then you have a vision. What do we picture happening here? Who'd be willing to read that?
I'll read it, Marjorie.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Our vision: A healthy, just, and lasting American republic in which constitutional rights for human beings are secure and all citizens are equal with the right and the responsibility to govern effectively together.
Yes. And then, three specifics under that. Who would be willing to read all three of those? That last segment of three little paragraphs? Who'd be willing to read?
This is Erin Rosiello, I'll read those.
Thank you.
Sure. "We envision an America where our representatives are elected and re-elected based on most of their ideas and their performance in the eyes of voters, not who can raise the most money from wealthy donors and special interest groups. Our elected officials' choices represent the will of the constituents, not the financial interests of those who fund their election campaigns. And then, political campaigns focus on the issues that matter to people, where debate is civil and where political advertising is not funded by dark money groups without the knowledge of the voters."
Right. Yep. Yeah, so, that's it. What the, what are first, we won't have the time because of other parts of our agenda, what are the kind of initial reactions or thoughts, feelings from reading "The Problem," "The Mission," "The Vision"? Who'd want to share?
I have a question, I've been thinking about this and maybe this is in, on the website, which I haven't looked at recently, but do we oppose individuals, wealthy individuals publicly giving money to political candidates? Or is it only if they give through super PACs or?
Yeah. What do you prefer? So if there's somebody, an individual that's real wealthy and gives loads of money to candidates and to lobby lawmakers when they're working on carving out laws, would you prefer that they have all the power to give that money or right to give that money? Or would you want to see that restricted or curtailed?
Well, I off the top of my head, well, not really, I've thought about this a long time. I don't, I think there should be limits on how much an individual could give, but I imagine we would run into tons of roadblocks with that.
Right. Ellen or Ted, you are our experts here with the background and the positions of American Promise. What is your response to Marjorie's point?
Uh, I think.
Go ahead, Chad.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Ellen, I'm on the phone here from Port Clinton with my flashlight. The constitutional amendment is the first step and that allows the federal government and the states to make the necessary rules. And my best guess is that individuals also will be restricted into how much they can donate to campaigns. It's not, there isn't anything specific right now. I think one way to look at this amendment, the constitutional amendment, is that it's the first step toward reform. It gives the federal and state governments permission to make rules. And I don't think we want wealthy individuals or wealthy corporations to have undue influence.
I think if you, if you look closely at what the group has read here, the problem, mission, vision, if we're going to limit the power of money, we're going to have to put a limit on how much, I could name names, we all know who they are. Both parties are getting millions and millions of dollars from individuals. In fact, I've seen a number of studies that say that the upper 5% are contributing something like 70% of the money in the campaign. So if we're really going to have equal rights and everybody's voice is going to be something, there's going to have to be, in addition to eliminating dark money, there's going to have to be limits on how much people can spend. I mean, it's one thing to lobby, nothing wrong with lobbying, but lobbying with money is a whole nother story. So, in fact, it occurred to me, Richard, that when someone is meeting with a legislator that might be reluctant to go along with this, and rather than asking them to do the pledge, a good starting point might be to ask them to read "The Problem," "The Mission," and "The Vision" and see what they might object to. I don't see anything in there that someone who is really an American could disagree with. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, good point, yes. Good. One more thought about the, from the reading there for you about the "The Problem," "The Mission," "The Vision"? Is that why you got on the call? Or is saving the snowy owl in your neighborhood, maybe that's why you got on? Here we are talking about money and politics and we could be talking about saving one-eyed cats, for example, would be another advocacy group that we could be working on. If you weren't on at the beginning, Elaine is the super cute one-eyed cat. So that's how that, that's how that popped into my consciousness. So let's take a look now, thank you for the agenda, because it's a natural build-in with this to come to ask, "I so respect Ellen Green Bush, who has been a leader, a hard worker, a great relationship builder, about American Promise in Ohio. She's the leader of our efforts here in Ohio, but also active on the national level too." So Ellen, would you share with us about the goals, as you see them, and the strategies? Where are we and where are we heading?
Yes. I think it's really important to emphasize that American Promise has one goal and that is a constitutional amendment to get big and dark money out of elections and policymaking. So although we think other things are very important, like overturning gerrymandering and voters' rights and the good, all the good government issues, our, our goal is the constitutional amendment. That amendment is taking the form of House Joint Resolution 1. It has not been introduced into the Senate yet. It's the Democracy for All Amendment. Some, sometimes it is confused, confused with H.R. 1, which is for the People Act. That is a bigger omnibus bill. You're reading a lot about it right now. And it talks about gerrymandering, voter rights. It does some transparency, closure for big money and dark money, but, and it calls for a constitutional amendment, but it is not the actual amendment. So what we are zeroing in on is House Joint Resolution 1, the Democracy for All Amendment, and we are really focusing in on the constitutional amendment.
Does that apply for 2021? So that's our overarching, and maybe also, could you give us a couple sentences about why again, the constitutional amendment is the absolute strategy path to take rather than offering legislation into Congress or whatever? What's the importance of the constitutional amendment?
Sure. Because of the 2010 Supreme Court decision, Citizens United versus the FEC, we, the Supreme Court has ruled that money is, is speech. And so until we overturn that, that Supreme Court decision, nothing can be done in Congress or in the states to control big money. And that's because the only way it can be done is if the Supreme Court rules differently or if we pass a constitutional amendment. It's not likely the Supreme Court is going to rule differently. And that's why we need the constitutional amendment. It will allow federal and state government to then make laws regarding big and dark money and politics and policymaking.
Yeah, good. And how about now applying this to this year? Because part of our strategy in, when the organizers met, was to, let's just really feature this year. It's a five and a half year journey to get to the constitutional amendment ratification. But what about this year? What do you see as the goals and strategies, Ellen?
Well, so for 2021, we have a lot of municipal elections. And so our focus in 2021 is to build up from the grassroots by starting to influence people in our local areas. We spent the last, I would say, three years working on the state legislature and, and that legislature hasn't changed really and it won't until 2022. So we're really working on local elections, city councils, mayors, township trustees, all those people that you know and you run into in the grocery store, who are your local elected officials. And our reasoning for that is that those people are accessible to us. They can put pressure on people higher up, like state legislators, and some of those people end up running for state or federal office. And so that's our strategy in 2021 up until toward November. As we approach November and we know who's going to be running for statewide office in Ohio in 2022, we will begin to shift to looking at those offices.
So is part, is it accurate that part of our work is to raise awareness about the problem, like we read about before, and the mission and the vision? Is that it's, we're at a kind of an informational stage, but also asking them to take a position, especially leaders, or anybody, citizens as well, by taking the pledge that I'm aware of this and I'll do something? If you could describe the, that combination of education about this issue and what the action with them that they can say publicly?
Yeah, so yes, part of it is educating people initially and then asking them, will you support our goal? Will you support our mission? And candidates can do that by signing our pledge, our candidate pledge. And individual citizens can do that by signing the citizen pledge. And we just want to really build that movement from the ground up, locally, mayoral, statewide, federal. But our focus in 2021 are local candidates, local elected officials.
Yeah. Good questions. What do you think goals should be? Are we as organizers, are we on track? Or are we bogged down in faulty thinking? This is what we came up as our, our goal. And then we'll describe the teams, we thought how to organize this, in addition to candidates and elected officials, to also reach business people through chambers and all that, and also build relationships with organizations that might be similar to us, those working on redistricting, for example, to end gerrymandering, or those working on voter rights, because this is a voter right issue, big money in politics. So what are your comments from Ellen sharing? Are we on track with the, the goal for 2021? What's your suggestion? Who's first for sharing here? Yes, Chuck.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify something. I'm on a, another committee, a bold new democracy here in Cincinnati, and I was tasked with finding out what the 28th Amendment is that is supported. So I went to the American Promise website and it mentioned a joint House resolution, but then it also said, "We don't necessarily agree with all the wording in this resolution." So, I mean, I would like to have something I can present to somebody and say, "This is what we support," but it doesn't even look like national has something that we, you know, agree on.
Ellen?
Yeah, you know, I'm not familiar with that. We, we do have the constitutional amendment. I've included that in the chat in previous meetings. We have spent, American Promise, we started in 2016 and we've spent, you know, roughly four years coming up with wording for a constitutional amendment. I think part of the issue is that whenever you get anything introduced into the legislature, that they are going to tweak it as they, you know, like to do. But it was my impression that what we have come up with now is pretty acceptable to most, to most people in the movement. Maybe if you could direct me to that, where you read that, that I am surprised that they would come out and say that unless that was like an older, that's something I heard farther back in the movement.
Well, it's on the American Promise website.
Do you know where it is? Do you remember Chuck, where it is on the website?
Well, it said constitutional amendment and then I opened that up and it talked about the House Joint Resolution. It didn't, it didn't show the verbiage, but then it said, "We don't necessarily agree with all the words in, in that resolution."
Hmm. Okay, well I will, go ahead, Chad.
Part of what we've been hearing is that there's a realization that the final verbiage in the amendment, as Ellen implied there, we don't know at this point. It's very controversial, the whole idea is. And our objective, as you probably are aware, is to get a cross-partisan amendment, not just one party. Even if the majority of a party, like the Democrats have right now, were to pass something, it's not an amendment. And to get an amendment, we're going to have to have it cross-partisan. So that there's an awareness that the language is going to change going forward, just being pragmatic. I'm not familiar with that comment either. I'm a little surprised, but I'm, I'll look, I've got my computer on here on, I'm at the website. So I'm at, I'm just where you mentioned, but I haven't found that verbiage yet, no, I'll continue.
That has been an ongoing question that I've noticed, Chuck, is what the exact language will be. And I think they're leaving some space to let some of that evolve. We are still five and a half years away and, but it has to be cross-partisan because if I believe, if I understand correctly, you, you need two-thirds of the Congress to vote to ratify the amendment.
Correct.
Unless the one party, one party, if one party dominates, but very seldom, if ever, does one party dominate by holding two-thirds of the House, you know? We're lucky now to have a split, almost a split in both houses.
Well, I think that's another distinction between an amendment and a bill that might get passed. Like the bill that Ellen was talking, talking about earlier. If a party passes it, for example, Democrats pass something right now by 51-50, for example, and then are not in power in two or four years, that can be reversed. Whereas an amendment could not be. So that's an important distinction that somebody made last month.
Great. Let's go back to the, thank you Chuck. Let's go back. What do you think? Goals for 2021? Is this knowledge, getting the knowledge or awareness out to the public and particularly to leaders, but also to organizations and business leaders, including business leaders? And the, so what do you think? What are the, are the goals that we're thinking about on track, do you think, for this year? Or would you change anything or do you have questions about it?
I have a suggestion, Richard.
Yeah.
If we take a 3,000-foot view rather, and the big picture, our goal is to get the state of Ohio to, through our legislature, clear that the state of Ohio supports a move to reform this. So that is our ultimate goal as, you know, the Ohio group of American Promise.
Yes.
So, and Ellen and Ted can probably give us better advice on the order of events, but you know, talking to legislatures and, and my mission is to continue where I was with the city council in Cincinnati right before the pandemic. But talk, you know, focus on municipal elections and candidates and so forth. And then also there would be a focus on business community and so forth. I'm, I'm not sure what the order, if there is a, in terms of priorities, an order of events to get to our final goal of getting a statement by the state of Ohio that is passed along to the federal legislature.
Uh, well, I, this is Ellen. I think I can answer that. We have spent since 2017 in Ohio, working with our legislature to try to get them to sponsor or support our amendment resolution. Basically to say that if the, if Congress passes this amendment, Ohio will ratify it. And it's really kind of a long story, but after Householder was made Speaker of the House in 2019, we, we made no progress with that. We were making really good progress before that. And with the 2020 elections, we have not found a big change in our legislature. And so our strategy now is to, to step back into more grassroots, local influence and hoping that in 2022, with new districts, we may see a different legislature and then that we might be able to exert more influence.
I think every.
Go ahead.
I think everyone is aware that when the districts are redrawn, which is, you know, that was mandated to Ohio in, in 15, I believe, for the state districts and then in 18 for the congressional district. So when those are redrawn, they should be much more fair. They can no longer be conspicuously or flagrantly partisan as they are now. And so that's not going to, it's, it's by the law, you cannot do it that way. And the districts also have to be compact. They can't be fractured into all these weird shapes anymore. And so that's now regulated by law. And so therefore, the hope is that when that happens this year, back towards the end of the year, that then we'll have elections in 2022 that will represent fairly the voice of the voters rather than the voice of the gerrymanderers.
Yeah. David, I think my response to your question of what's the order is that we divide into three teams purposely. Now, whether that's the best, the most effective strategy, we'll find out. But I think that sort of suggests that we're going to work at three different levels, three different target audiences, I should say, actually targets within those audiences. The one I'll be working with, the team will be business, Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, just a thing like that, people like that. But having said that, that we're going to have three different teams working, I don't see any problem with people calling, writing their legislators and starting to plant that seed. We've been doing that for a couple of years. As Ellen said, we didn't get very far because one party said, "You're not going to do this, you're going to lose your funds." And that was pretty clear. But that doesn't mean that there aren't a number of Republicans that agree with the 80% of the voters that, that something needs to happen. They don't like spending 30, 40% of their time raising amples. And they also know that Democrats are raising as much, in some cases more money than Republicans are. So once you get beyond the people with the power that hold the purse strings on those PACs, I think there's probably a lot of Republicans as well as Democrats that realize this is a real problem. In fact, when you go to the website, you'll see a number, unfortunately, most of them retired, but Republicans that have said, "This is the core problem of solving problems in this country, that we've got to get the money out, we're not going to solve environment, healthcare, you name the problem." That's where it is. So writing letters, contacting the Republican representatives and senators in Ohio is not a bad thing. I think, to the extent we can do that, it'll depend on how many people we have that are active. If we can get enough people active, I think we could make some headway there. Even if they aren't allowed to, to join us yet, by the time they're up for election, they may realize that it's in their best interest to listen to what their constituents are saying. I think we probably all heard the adage that legislators go by, that if one person calls, there's probably 10 others out there saying the same thing. So if they were to get hundreds and hundreds of calls on, not just from American Promise, but from people in favor of campaign finance, specifically an amendment, I think they're going to have to start listening.
Yeah.
I'd be curious what others think. Am I all wet there? What do you think?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not sure if Republicans, because of gerrymandering, they really pay attention, not to constituents, not from the other party really, because the party, their, their district is safe to their party. They pay attention to the more extreme of their own party.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So therefore, they, the idea of getting big money out, many of them benefit from that. So I think 2022 is our hope. is that that's when things are going to shift to be more, the districts will be fair, and then therefore the elections will be more fair. And people will pay attention where there's really contested elections, campaigns, where the, the campaigns are really pretty close to the population of Ohio, which is what, fifty one forty nine? You know, I mean, we're really close, uh, as a state, uh, uh, if, when you boil things down, but on the other hand, gerrymandering skews that about. Anyone else want to share on this point about goals for twenty twenty one?
Yeah, this is Ream. Hey, everyone.
Hi.
I'm very grateful to Ellen and to the American Promise Group for wonderful work that y'all have been doing. Um, so I, I ran for office in twenty twenty, and I lost.
Yeah, what did you run for?
I lo, ran for Ohio State Senate against, like, our own.
Way to go. How gerrymandered was that Senate district?
Very insanely. It's never gone down.
Insanely.
Fine flu. Um, you know, so I love the work that we're doing and that you're doing. Um, I think, you know, a goal that I've been thinking about
Yeah.
is if we could, um, two, two parts, if we could shape the narrative of how this caused us to lose. So we lost, um, you know, a lot of seats that, that we would have liked to win in twenty twenty. And if we could tie that and those losses, or pick like a couple of them that were key, and tie them to big money causing those losses, I think that could go a long way in telling the story of how this could change the future, right? I mean, obviously, gerrymandering is important, but also money in politics is one of the main reasons that those losses took place. So if we could pick like two or three across the state and make them part of our messaging, I think that would be really great. Uh, so that's one part. And the second part is
Go ahead, Ream.
is if we could, uh, you know, I know I saw that, I, I don't know if the document is still up, I can't see it anymore.
Yeah, I took it down. I'll put it back up again, sure.
So, so we have the businesses, there's a specific group for them, and there's the Healthy Democracy, which is kind of the broad association with groups that have similar goals. You know, maybe we need to be more specific with that, and so that we are targeting, for example, like every Black Lives Matter chapter across the state, because these are groups that are for sure going to agree with us, and they're already organized. So by tapping into their existing structures, we could save ourselves a lot of time.
Although the Democratic groups tend to be low hanging fruit. They're the easy ones in some ways to, they're interested in having speakers come, they're interested in learning more, they're interested in perhaps aligning with, uh, actions that we take. I think it's important to do that, Ream, you're right. But it is the low hanging fruit. The harder fruit is the team there in the middle, Business and Labor Team. That's a more challenging group, uh, there. What is your response, Ellen?
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I, I totally agree with Ream. I mean, one of the things that I have really consciously been trying to do is to include more people of color into our movement, because, I mean, this is, this is really, uh, this is a racist issue. There's no question about it. I mean, you have a one percent of basically, you know, white males who are controlling the money and policy. And, um, I don't think our movement really, I mean, I know we're trying to reach out, but I don't think we really have embraced, um, uh, people of color. And, uh, I wish, I mean, I am really open to suggestions, because I am not part of that group, and so I'm an outsider, but I really would like to be all encompassing, and I totally agree with Ream on that.
I think that is exciting, because we could form another team of, of people of color, or you know, we'd frame how, what language to use there, but to, to form a team to reach out to those particular, uh, groups of all, you know, everyone, anyone that's non-white male, the group, uh, uh, but the, um, that would be an, that's, well, we don't make a decision this moment, but Ream, I think that's important to consider in our organizing group. Ellen and Ted and I will take that seriously in, into strategy thinking.
What would you like to, this is Donna, what would you like to accomplish tonight from us? What, what would you want to have us commit to, or are we just thinking about things at this point?
Oh, no, we're moving, we're moving there, Donna. It's a good, it's a good transition.
I thought so.
Good, because we, the idea of these teams is that we'd love to have you join. I did put another question on here, which maybe we won't consider tonight and save it, but I think it's in your view, what do everyday Ohio citizens think when hearing get big money out of politics? Do they not care? Do they think it's terrible? Do they hate the commercials on TV? Do they hate their corruption? In Cincinnati, we've had three council members, um, arrested by the FBI for corruption charges in Toledo, and of course, we all know what happened in the State House. So what do people think is, is an issue? We got to reach people where they really think, and the, the polling so far is that most people think it's a big issue, they'd like to change it. So we know we've got that, but let's save that and introduce our three teams. Would you introduce those, Ellen, in our thinking for each one of the teams?
Yeah, so our first team is our Healthy Democracy team, and Richard is, um, our organizer for that team. With that team, we are really trying to reach out to, uh, redistricting groups, voter rights groups, Healthy Democracy groups, you know, League of Women Voters. And what we are trying to do is educate people as well as perhaps coming up with some kind of a, a joint statement about how money in politics affects their ability to uh, get things done, or how it contributes to their problem. Uh, Richard, I don't know if you want to, like, go on right from there, or do you want me to?
Yeah, that might be, well, maybe to do the over, like, people can see on the screen, Ellen, I know you can't see. But I have, on the screen, I have the three teams that we thought, these are groups that we could focus into. And I think the big one for Ohio is redistricting groups is going to be big this year. I mean, it's already, the foundational work is being done now.
Yeah.
And the actual work is going to be more and more, and people go into hearings and making all that voices heard, and uh, there's now technology where you can draw your map yourself. You can be a map, a map drawer. It's really cool. But the, um, but how to connect in with that. And when Nancy Gurney and I met, uh, earlier this week, we looked at, uh, how can we help people connect those two issues of redistricting and, um, getting big money out of politics, you know? One is short term, the redistricting will happen this year. Uh, and one is long term, five and a half years, as I mentioned. So Americans like things done quickly, so it's going to be, how do we get into the, the consciousness of people and to realize how big this is? And that our strategy with the amendment is smart. So we could really use some help with this team of how to connect with voter rights, redistricting. Uh, a lot of the nonpartisan groups, uh, the five oh one C threes and fours.
Right.
I have a question for Ted, Canacki. Um, Common Cause falls into this group, and they're very active. Are there, uh, other people in your neighborhood, uh, the Columbia, greater Columbus area, who might, uh, be interested in getting involved with us in, in Richard's team, uh, because of them, as a starter?
Yes, Common Cause Ohio is headquartered in, in Columbus, David, and they've had, uh, some seminars and some meetings in the last year, and they do, agree with us. Uh, they do, in fact, Common Cause back in nineteen seventy one, when it was started, the leader said then, if we don't do something about campaign finance, we're going to lose our democracy. He nailed it, again, fifty years ago.
Wow.
But, and I, and I joined the following year, that's how old I am. But, uh, I think you make a very good point. I, I've noticed that they have taken a little bit of a different tack lately. Their main issue has been transparency, which, as Ellen knows, is important. They were not, when I talked to people at their national level several years ago, they weren't quite as supportive as I thought they would be. Uh, they saw it as having a lot of legal issues and a really an uphill climb. They've started to come around on that, though, now. I think they're starting to see, like every organization, that, uh, that it is becoming inevitable. We've got to do something about money. It can't, the limitations and the PACs, things like that. It can't be just transparency. So I think you make.
What does transparency mean, Ted, from their point of view, if you can represent them?
Well, I think it's fair to say that transparency to, about any group, including Common Cause, is we need to know where the money's coming from. And we, we can't have this dark money, as it's called, coming from, who knows where, China, Russia, uh, anyplace in the world. That's how a lot of the money in, in the, in the country, uh, is sheltered. It's like a, it's a shell game. It goes to one, uh, organization, then it goes to another, and you don't know who is, who's, uh, who's behind it. So that's an issue, but they have come around, I think, and they're realizing more and more. They're very much behind Senate Bill One. Uh, so I think you're onto a good point there. We do need to work with them, and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, and part of it, again, is that short term, long term. It, it's so big, the, the projects are so big i- in the short term, and that next year is going to be such a hot election year in Ohio. Uh, so then it's going, it's going to be how we don't just get pushed to the back burner and forgotten. How can we make it in their interest? My sense is of organizing, we got to connect it to their interest. Common Cause, how is this our work with American Promise in your interest? We don't, you don't have to do all the work, but you can help support it. Maybe we'll do a joint, um, webinar about it, and how the redistricting and American Promise's mission are connected. But that's where we need your help. And ending corruption, or at least, you know, reducing the, the field is sloped towards corruption because of all the big money in there. So, uh, how we can do that as well. So that is our Healthy Democracy. Now, the second team, Business and Labor Team, that's the real challenge team in some ways, because are these local chambers and rotaries and union leaders, are they, they like having their money to throw around or influence lobby and, uh, you know, buy off. So what is your thinking, Ted, and what help do you need with the Business and Labor approach to bring awareness of American Promise to?
I think like most of our other challenges, uh, it's a matter of making people aware that there's some myths out there. Small businesses are not helped very much, from what I've learned from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. They represent huge organizations, and they're going to be very, very much against getting money out, because they've been very successful at it. Small businesses and entrepreneurs, people like that, don't have enough money to fight the battles, uh, in terms of being out, they're being outspent. We've had people that are, have union ties that have said, wait a minute, you can't take away our voice if, if we can't donate money to campaigns. We're going to be hurting. Well, that's true in isolation, but businesses are contributing anywhere from seven to eight to ten times as much as, as unions are. So if unions lost their opportunity to spend money on elections, as long as it happens to businesses also, they're going to come out ahead, is my argument.
Yeah.
If they're the only ones, they're right, then they lose their, their mouthpiece, so to speak, they lose their, uh, their opportunity. But if it happens to everybody, they're going to come out ahead, and they're going to save a whole lot of money in the process. The other groups, Chambers of Commerce, yes, I think we need to, and again, there's some good, we'll talk about this briefly after a while, but, uh, on the website, there is a section in the resource library for the business group. And a number of points in there argue that it really is in the best interest of businesses. If they're entrepreneurial, the capitalist system is being hampered by money. Uh, an entrepreneur can have the best idea, but if that company or that small business can't operate effectively, then uh, because of the laws, then it doesn't do any good. Rotaries, uh, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Rotary. They have a four-way test. They have, I think they call it seven pillars. They have, they have some real strong principles. They're very cross partisan. They have really nothing to do with politics. In fact, there are some Rotary presentations in the resource library. So, um, my request would be, if you're involved in Rotary, you know somebody that is, uh, get ahold of me. Uh, I've made contact with a couple of them already. We're talking with one in Cincinnati, Richard. I'm sorry, not Rotary per se, but it's a group that would be very interested in a Rotary presentation, because the principles that they have apply to business very heavily. Uh, I think most Rotarians are, are business people. But we need to get beyond this idea that, uh, money is the, the way to operate.
Yeah. Who here knows a friend or a relative or a neighbor or, uh, somebody that is a member of Chamber of Commerce's type of organization, or a Rotary, or a union? Gloria, do you know somebody?
I do. I know several in, in Loveland. I'm involved in the chamber here.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, Gloria is a business owner, and, um, is it, is your chamber mostly small businesses, Gloria, or a lot, medium, large, or a mixture?
It's started to change some, so there are some larger, um, businesses now than there used to be. So it's a combination.
Would you mind putting your, either send, you have, you have to decide on your privacy. Uh, you could put your.
I'll be glad, Richard, I know where you're going with this. I'll be glad to give my email address, and Gloria can reach me through that.
That would be good. That's good.
T W.
Thank you, Gloria. That's perfect. Yes.
You can see the spelling. It's T W K N A P K E at gmail dot com.
Yeah, thank you. Who else? Good start, Gloria. Who else would have a, uh, family member or, um, a neighbor or, uh, a union buddy? I mean, I do, I have union buddies down here, Ted, so I certainly could connect you to, Pete McClendon, who's the AFL-CIO Labor Council Leader, I think for Ohio, actually, that I could connect you with. So put me on your list.
I have a quick question, uh, regarding the unions. Have we had conversations at all with the AFL-CIO?
Yeah, I have not talked to my buddies in there about American Promise. Have you, Ellen, have you had conversations with union leaders?
Not in Ohio, but I would like, I would really like to say that I've heard this metaphor that, um, when you talk about, a lot of, a lot of times when you talk about money in politics and people bring up corporations, and then, uh, people will say, well, but what about unions? Well, I've heard it described, uh, the, the money a corporation contributes is like a nuclear bomb, and the money a union contributes is like a sparkler. So.
Right. Little difference in scale, huh?
So, solving the problem of big money in politics really is going to put unions on a more equal level.
Thank you. And I'd like to go back then to anybody to support this team and Ted's work reaching out. I just give you so much credit, Ted, to, uh, do that. Anybody else have any connections you can think of with any businessy? You know, even a significant business. Do you have a, a sister who runs a mid or large size business? We could go to individual businesses and see what they think about it, and bring their employees, their leaders and their staff up to it. So think about that. The other part, the request here for Ted's team is when we asked for, for people to join teams, in my team, I had two people volunteer, uh, well, three, and then one was lured off to another one. So now I have had two, and then, which was good. And then, uh, Ellen, how many people volunteered? You know, we're just getting started with this twenty twenty one plan, so we didn't have big expectations. So we didn't have big expectations right away. But how many came about to your, or how many are on your team Ellen?
I think about eight.
Good. So three for my team, eight for Ellen's team with the candidates and elected officials. And for Ted's team, Ted is a lone wolf.
Richard, I would be happy, this is Erin Rosiello. I would be happy to support Ted.
Oh, cool.
Thank you. Thank you Erin.
Yeah. So I've done a couple.
That's great Erin.
Yes, Ellen, hi.
Hi.
I would be happy to do that. I was, um, I helped start a chapter of Rotary for Cincinnati West.
Yeah.
I have also run for candidate state rep just recently and had a lot of union endorsements. So there's some connections there. So I'm happy to do it.
Terrific. Yeah, then one of our pledge signers, Erin, right?
Yeah, thank you for running. And you're up in the Warren County area, is that right Erin?
Yes. And interesting, you were talking about, you know, the flow of money and, and our, our current state rep. He received three chunks of 30,000 per quarter under Larry Householder, but it was from the Republican Party. So it's kind of been, it's been whitewashed somewhat or laundered, so to speak. But he basically, just so we have the heads up, gives every single chamber in Warren County a thousand bucks.
Right.
You know, he, he's spread that money all around the Republican money in Warren County. So just kind of having that in mind, we, we gotta definitely hit it from a nonpartisan angle.
Yeah.
And know that they are, they're sharing the wealth.
Good point. Thank you for running too Erin. Down here in Cincinnati, your name popped up a lot.
That's good.
I know. Well, it's because we're in the same congressional district. So it was part of that, but I loved seeing you. Thanks for, for stepping up and, and being a candidate. That's.
Thank you.
Hard work.
All right. Well, I'll follow up Erin. We'll, we'll talk.
Sounds good.
Now Ellen, you're, thanks Ted. Ellen, your particular team with the, describe it and where are you and how can we support your team?
Well, I am organizing the elective officials and candidates team. We are working on local elections in 2021. So we're asking our team members to look at people that in their running for mayor, city council, township trustee. And to reach out to those people. But in addition to that, we also have a sort of initiative from American Promise National, which is the National Lobby Day.
Yeah, that's on the agenda coming up soon. So.
Oh, okay. Well, well, we can wait for that then.
Okay, good.
Yes, but.
What do you need help with the candidates and with the elected officials?
Okay, what we need help with is we have one person in southeastern Ohio who is kind of by himself there. So if we have anybody else that is interested or from southeast Ohio, we could build that. We also do not have representation in northeast Ohio. Although I'm trying very hard in the Cleveland area and I really would like to see us get more people of color from Cleveland. But if anybody is from Cleveland or knows anybody from that area, I'm really looking to build us out there.
Okay, let me pause you one second Ellen. Let's ask in real time. Scanning your network of people, might there be friends, family, anybody in northeast Ohio that might be interested in, obviously they wouldn't make commitment immediately, but maybe they're already a leader in some way, or they've been a candidate, or they care about democracy that would, might do that. Can anybody think of somebody? Elaine?
I am, I am needed. Well, I'm reaching out. You know, I know that we're in 2021, we're supposed to focus on local elections, but we have a huge senatorial race coming up in
Yeah.
2022. And the lead candidate is Tim Ryan. And I have already reached out to him, not as far as this, but he is a union person. And the, the reason, the reason he gave for dropping out so early was lack of money in the presidential election.
Yep.
So I think that we should make connections with northeast Ohio.
That would be a good one, because Tim Ryan is coming to Bold New Democracy to work with us on March the 11th and his, his senior advisor, Mike Morley is, I'm in relation, you know, kind of conversation with setting that up. I think that would be a good lead. Maybe Mike, who's an active leader in northeast Ohio, could be a resource for us.
Good.
So thanks for that idea Elaine. Who's next? Who knows somebody in northeast Ohio or southeast Ohio?
Ellen, have you had the opportunity to reach out to Stephanie House, State Representative from Cleveland?
I, I have sent her emails, but I have not been able to make a personal contact.
Ooh, do you know her Erin?
I, I do a little bit. I, I spoke with her while I was running. Ellen, I'm, I'm happy to help you try to plug into Cleveland if you'd like.
That would be super.
Thank you Erin. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That would be great.
Anybody else have ideas for just any connection to northeast, southeast? Yeah. And then of course, people can collect their own suggestions of people to ask to sign the pledge. Is that right? You still are doing that, right Ellen? Candidates?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, yes. Uh, one of the things I just want to put a sort of a germ in people's minds to think about is that I've had some conversations with potential statewide candidates. And one of the things that people say is, you know, corruption maybe isn't such an issue statewide. So my response is how do we tie corruption with the things that are most important to Ohioans? Like jobs, healthcare and social justice. How do we make those connections? And I know it's not something we can answer today, but something that we might want to pursue as we look forward to elections. Our candidates may not speak directly to American Promise, but they may say, we need this to happen because it affects justice, it affects jobs, it affects healthcare.
Yeah. And I like that Richard Dana suggested that Amelia Sykes might be a resource or her staff. Any of that might be a resource for finding somebody up there.
Northeast. Okay.
Yeah. Does anybody know Amelia or anybody on Amelia's staff?
Um, I have spoken with Amelia a couple of times, Mrs. Erin. I could get a message to her.
Yeah. Oh, good. You're a good resource. Please don't go away.
Sounds like I need, sounds like I need to connect with you a little more Erin.
Erin, thank you so much.
Yeah, okay.
Terrific. Good. So that gives us some help as we go on. Now let's get to some of the decision-making about how to move this forward. We have about 25. Thank you for staying. Some people find an hour meeting is fine. In my years of doing this work, there's something magical about 90 minutes. There's, you kind of get through some of the other things. Before we move to the, the final questions, we wanted to take, give you a quick view of the resource library. Is that something that you can open up onto the screen? Oh yeah, I want to introduce Marnie Walsh, who's been our, we're so blessed to have a empowerment coordinator from the National American Promise Organization in the Boston area. And so Marnie helps us in countless ways and helps set up this call. And so what's your project today? Give us an example of your day today, Marnie.
My day today? So it's like, it's different things. Obviously supporting chapter members and chapter leaders. But today, Dr. Jessica and I are working on like an AP, like a resource page. So this is going to be accessible for chapter leaders and chapter members and just in terms of like breaking things down and providing information that's useful because there's been a lot of conversations and questions I, I don't necessarily have the answer to. So like with working with Dr. Jessica, who is the empowerment director, we have been able to like work together and create this amazing document that will be sent out within the next few days, linked in the empowerment monthly. So I'm pretty excited about that.
Yeah. So you help many, 19 chapters, I think around the country. But one of the 19 is Ohio and we're trying to convince Marnie that we are the pick of the litter, you know, I mean, we are the ones that she really wants to think of as her favorite. She wouldn't tell the others that we're there her favorite, but we were working to try to become her favorite. Can you lead us Marnie into the resource page so that Ted can make some comments about how this can be a tool for us moving forward?
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So when going on the American Promise website, you can, so there's little headings up here. So you can click the resource as one. And it brought me here. So we have two subsections. So there's the American Promise Resource Library. And that's, this is public, by the way. And then there's the Business Network Library. And Ted, which one would you like me to jump into first?
Go ahead with the first one, the general one.
All right. So when entering this document, you'll see a ton of different links. So you can click on the link so that we, they have been broken up into different subsections. So there's an introduction, which is understanding big money in politics. So learning about the amendment in the work American Promise does. So I can click on one of those. So we can click on the intro into American Promise. And then there's a, that brings you to an additional Google document. That provides information about American Promise. And it looks like this.
Yeah, good. And we can use that. We can send that to somebody. If somebody said, I really want to learn more, or a candidate wants to learn more, or elected official, we can make a, just copy that link and say, scan this. This will give you a real deep understanding.
Yep. And then going down, so as Ellen was talking about in terms of Lobby Day, so there's like to take action and lobbying elected officials. And then it talks about, you know, how the guide to requesting a meeting with your elected official, the template for a meeting agenda. So we'll click on that and see what that looks like. So we have this one, meeting with an elected official template agenda. And this just highlights what to, what to ask for. Your thank you, sharing a personal story. I started, so I requested a meeting with my representative in Vermont, who is Congressman Peter Welch. But I, I only got to meet with his aide, but I kind of followed these sections of this template. All right. And then we can go down.
Good. It's a good tools to have.
Yeah. And then there's a take action. Talking about how to fill out forms when you have like a published media. So like when chapters have a letter to the editor published, then they'll click on that form, which is also on the website. And that comes to me just showing, hi, I got a letter to the editor published. They provide the link where it's published. And then when we have our empowerment monthly, which is like our bulletin slash newsletter, I will highlight that in that newsletter. So this would be great for you also, the group organizing. So this is resources for starting and maintaining a local chapter. Then it talks about like the chapter roadmap. Which is neat. Okay. And this is just highlight successes, leader calls. This document's pretty neat.
We used that two or three years ago. I think all three of the chapters did.
Yep.
And background, we had three chapters and now we're really just one state chapter. So really beyond this step in many respects, but there's just a wealth of information. You can spend hours on this. There's videos, there's all kinds of position papers. It's just really phenomenal what they've done the last year to make this a better resource. In fact, you'll notice we skimmed over Rotary as one there listed, labor and union outreach. And there's a healthcare professionals. I know Ellen and some other healthcare professionals have been involved nationally at that. And it's, it's a very fertile area. A lot of those people are very much aware of whether it's pharmaceuticals or just the healthcare industry, how much money does impact decisions there for better or worse.
Terrific. If anybody wants to find some of these resources rather than, is, is there a search capacity with the, with the resource tab? Marnie, do you know?
Um, so when you go on the website, it just pulls you onto like the, these two hyperlinks. But I believe if you click, sometimes if you do command F and like if you say you want to search for Rotary like that, this link comes here. Yep.
Okay. So you're teaching us, it's nice when young people teach old people how to, and not, not everybody here is old now. I'm not pretending that everybody is. There's Erin and, and Reeve and others are young, but the but what is the shortcut there to be able to search then?
You can go command F.
Command? What is command? Where do I find the command button?
Um, the command button. So it's usually directly next to your spacebar. I am, I have a MacBook, so mine's next to my spacebar.
Yeah. It might.
And it says, and it's spelled out as command usually.
It might, it might say control in the PC world.
Control usually does that too. Yeah.
Yeah. So control S and then you can search, oh, F.
Yep, like find.
Okay, good. Control F and then you can search through the document. Great. Thank you for this introduction. And we've got to do it. And if you need any help with the resources, we or Marnie or we can be a resource for you too. To be able to do that. I want to honor our ending time. It's good. Thank you for hanging in. But we have a number of things to still complete. Additional questions. What's, what support would be helpful to you? Assuming you might want to continue, for some of you, you're continuing to be an American Promise activist member. And some of you might be new. What is, what would be helpful to you to be an active member, to be a happy active member? How can we serve you? Who's first?
I'll go first. And I think this was brought up previously. I think we need to tie up what the language is. So I think this was brought up by, what was it? Was it Chad or I forget who, but I, I think we have to tie up that, that language holes here about who it is we are. Because if we're going to go out seeking persons to make pledges here on this, I don't think we can have any ambiguity here with respect to that.
Yeah. That's been a thorny one for the couple of years I've been involved. Is exact language, Richard. It's, it's tricky to, nobody wants to write the amendment yet. That's, is, is that what you're thinking? We should have a more exactly worded amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I mean, I'm kind of the historian in the group here. So.
Good, good.
The passage of the 19th amendment. I mean, it was pretty, you know, clear of what they wanted to have happen, right?
Yeah.
And then what they did here was they did surveys of everyone here in government. How do you feel about this? And they had them go on record. Are you for it or against it? If you're talking about 80% of the populace thinks that money doesn't, doesn't match, you get these people on record. And I think that's the path that we have to take.
Oh, good.
I think if we confuse this with respect to, you know, corruption, that didn't fly at all in 2020 with respect to first. that didn't fly at all in twenty twenty with respect to First Energy. I hate to say that, but the populace thinks that every politician is crooked.
Good.
And it doesn't matter who's in power, and it comes down to that same thing about money and politics doesn't mix. And I think we have to just have a very simple message, and then we gotta get people on record. And let's have people say that, hey, we think unlimited money and politics, you know, fits. And have them have to run on that and support that position.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Terrific. Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm trying to put this in. I wanted you to, uh, if you would, to send me your, uh, I like connecting with historians. Um, I put my, um, my email in there, Richard. Um, we, Richard, should stick together, you know, too. So the, uh, if you could, uh, send me an email, and I'd like maybe others, and I'll make sure that your idea is there. It's a tricky one. And who in American Promise National, Marnie, kind of struggles, wrestles with that exact wording of the amendment to get it really someday clear? I know it's an ongoing issue.
Let me take a peek on that. It might be on the website. I'm not entirely sure who that is.
Okay, you can get back to me about it.
Yeah, I'm also gonna check to online.
While she's looking for that, Richard, I know Jeff Clements, most of you know who he is, the leader, who is an attorney, and we have, American Promise has an attorney, and they're, they've been very involved in that. I think, uh, Richard, uh, Richard Dana, that is, to your point, there have been changes in the language, and you're right, it is important to get it clear and make sure we've got something people can stand with. I think, again pragmatically, they're trying to reach out, get Republicans involved, and they may have conceded some language a little bit. Hopefully, it's down to the final analysis, though. There are some basic tenets that American Promise and the other, uh, groups that are with us are gonna hold on to, that they're not gonna give in on. And hopefully, when, when it becomes politically more plausible, when politicians of both parties, right now unfortunately, the Republicans, when they start realizing that seventy-five, eighty percent, even sixty-seven percent of their own party say this has to happen, then the language may get a little softer. They may not hold out for absolute rights of, uh, of businesses and things like that. But it's really been a tough struggle so far. You're exactly right. Uh, but I, I suspect if Jeff were here, he'd have a, an explanation along that line. I've heard him talk about it before, that, uh, uh, we just need to get the best language we can get. But in the final analysis, it'll be legislators that'll be writing it. Hopefully, as, as we've said, we've got five and a half years. Hopefully in two or three years, the, uh, complexion will change a little bit there, and it'll be a, more of a bipartisan, uh, effort, and we'll have language that, uh, is clear and not ambiguous at all.
Yeah, good points, Richard. Please keep pushing us or staying in relationship about that. We need that encouragement. I think American Promise does as well. Uh, the, uh, additional questions, number two, is depending on your schedule, we honor your own management of your own schedule, of course. Would you be willing to meet monthly with American Promise Ohio? Uh, the three of us as organizers chose the fourth Thursday each month. That's where we are now, from seven to eight thirty. So the next one would be March twenty-fifth, uh, from seven to eight thirty. So just, uh, you know, I'm just curious that, uh, um, how many is that work? If you're crazy enough to work on a six and a half year plan, five and a half year plan, uh, how many would be willing to, with your schedules, uh, per, you know, space, be able to, be willing to show up once a month for the, uh, American Promise Ohio work session?
I definitely would.
Yeah, Elaine, Nancy. Yeah, thanks, Marjorie. Yeah, thanks, Chot. Do you have something to add?
No, I, I just, I agree with, uh, with Richard that, I mean, if you have basic tenets that you want in the amendment, I think you just need to put it out there.
Yeah.
Say, "This is what we're going for."
Yep.
And, and what you need is the things that you absolutely have to have to make this work. And then the, the verbiage comes later, but I really think you ought to be able to put it out there. This is what we're gunning for. This is the only way it'll work if we get these things.
Right. And that might be, that might be part of our job as a chapter, is to continually gracefully and respectfully, but persistently lobby American Promise National. This is what you've got to do. From our point of view, out here in the heartland, this is what you do. So number three, would you be willing to meet once a month? This is not a requirement. I mean, none of it's a requirement, obviously. But part of our work here is to, uh, have our teams that you've been introduced to. Some of you already have joined the team and have already had your first meeting. Uh, and thank you, Erin, for, uh, Ted was getting a little, uh, uh, say it all by himself, you know? Because I heard one of the, the, the recording, it was, "Ted, what do you think about?" "Well, I don't know, Ted," you know, and so they went back and forth. But the, um, uh, so thank you, Erin, for working on that. Uh, would anyone here be willing that isn't on a team yet? And again, it's not required. It's not, we don't wanna put anybody on the spot. Anybody would like to join the team? Uh, and then you'll be notified. Uh, Chot?
Yeah, I'd like to join in the Healthy Democracy team.
Yay, yeah. Yeah, Chot and I work real closely with the Bold New Democracy here. Thank you, Chot. And, um, who else? Anybody else be willing to?
Gloria, I believe you'd said something earlier. I don't wanna.
Yes, I, I would like to help. I would like to know what help you need with the business team. I can be part of that.
Oh, great.
Appreciate it.
Yay, Ted. Good. Uh, so if you want to do that, you could drop it in the chat, or you could communicate with us. That would be, uh, terrific, uh, to help us move forward. And you plan your own agendas with your organizer, but also you prepare for the monthly meetings. So the monthly meetings start getting more enriched and powerful because there's teams working on that. Um, the National Citizens Leadership Conference. Uh, Ellen, would you give us a view of what this is about in the Lobby Day? Oh, I muted you, uh, Ellen. Let me see if I can unmute you. Because there were background sounds. Let me see if I can. Oh, it says, "Ask to unmute." Oh no, that's Marie. Um, oh, shoot. Maybe, um, I don't see. Oh yeah, this is, "Ask to unmute." I don't know how to unmute, Ellen. Ask to un-
Usually when you ask to unmute, like a little.
Oh yeah. Now can you unmute, Ellen? When you're on your phone, I don't know what you do, if you have to push a button or what you do. Aw.
Hold on, I think I know how to fix it.
Okay. On the phone, how do you unmute?
Uh, if you tap the screen, there's a, a button on the left bottom.
There's no screen when the person's on the.
Oh, it's like a li- oh, a regular.
Telephone, yeah. Right. Ah, no, now I see him. Yay, Ellen!
Here I am.
How did we, how did you do that, by the way, Ellen?
Star six, I'm still in the dark with my, uh, my, uh, crank, uh, flashlight.
Wow, great.
It's cold here in northern, yeah, okay, so.
Ted Cruz is, Ted Cruz is gonna come and bring you dinner, uh, in a little while, so. I recognize Ted Cruz showing up.
Ellen, Ellen, this is, this is Nancy. Do you wanna come over and spend the night?
Hey, maybe I will, Nancy. Maybe I will.
If you do, if you do, just call.
Yeah, good going. So we were at the American Promise National Citizens Leadership Conference. Make it exciting for Ellen.
I've been at several. Um, I have not, uh, this year it's gonna be virtual. And we are, it is the first week of May. We're going to be organizing, uh, I believe into, people can sign up for different workshops, but also we can sign up to lobby. And we can lobby our senators and our, uh, congress members, our house members. So up here in Northwest Ohio, we have talked to Marcy Capter. We've talked to, uh, Rob Portman and Sherrod Brown. But in the whole state of Ohio, you also have Sherrod Brown and Rob Portman and your own congressperson. So there is a, I put a link, uh, Ted or, um, Richard in our agenda.
Yeah.
Where people can sign up for our Lobby Day. And we can, even though our, our focus in Ohio is on local, we also, as a part of Lobby Day for American Promise, are going to participate in, uh, our federal, um, lobby, lobbying.
Yes, it has to pass on the federal level first. Does it not? An amendment's path is first through the Congress, and then it goes to the states. So being on the national level is really quite important.
Yes, so, uh, in terms of my district up here in Northwest Ohio, Marcy Capter has always been a supporter, and she will be a supporter. Uh, Sherrod Brown always has been a supporter and will be a supporter. We have talked to Rob Portman probably three years in a row. Uh, don't get back from him very much. But we also have all these other congressional districts in the state uh, who could contact their representatives or, uh, their, um, Sherrod Brown or Rob Portman.
Yeah, and they.
And it.
And that's organized. You don't have to do all that organized. When you go to the, to the conference, the national conference, or to Lobby Day, if we go, uh, we don't have to be organizing and being in the dark doing this. There's a lot of assistance of how to set up the Lobby Day and what to say and who goes, even though it's on, in some ways going on Zoom is, is easier. Uh, but we get a lot of assistance during the, those, uh, four days. Is that correct?
Yes, and so, um, Richard, in our, um, our Google document, I put a, a web link, and people can sign up for.
Yeah, we have that in our agenda here, the Lobby Days.
Okay, good.
The Lobby Days.
Okay, good, good.
I, I didn't find anything yet on the, uh, the conference. The, uh, I didn't find a link to the conference page yet.
No, no. Yep, yep. So it's mostly, there is a, uh, Google, uh, sheet people can fill out if they're interested in connecting with their legislators on the federal level.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and then the, um, we'll, we'll work that out about how to go. And as, you don't know the details yet, or maybe, Marnie, do you know?
I don't think, no, I don't think they have, no, I don't think they have them yet, uh, Richard.
There won't be costs, or there will be, or ask for?
I don't, I do not think there will be.
Okay.
Don't hold me to it, but I think it's gonna be all virtual.
Yeah.
Yep.
It would, it would be nominal probably if there was.
Yeah, and it goes as a donation, and Marnie makes all those decisions. So we can, uh, uh, influence Marnie to, uh, give us a good deal. But I think you're right, Ellen. It'll probably, with Zoom, it'll be, uh, uh, very low, nominal or free. Uh, if you have any, we're right at our last moment. Uh, if you have anybody that has expertise in email management, you know, email servers, groups, uh, MailChimp or Constant.
Social media.
Constant Contact, social media, over Facebook page, any of that. If you know somebody that is some expertise, doesn't have to be super expert, please let us know. We as organizers need some help, uh, partly technical, partly just to, to, some people can set it up in, uh, five minutes and, uh, and teach us a little bit. And, uh, we can take five days, you know, to do it. So it all depends. So we need some expertise there. Uh, we talked about the different parts of the state. We need help with an organizer in Northeast and Southeast. So we've reached our ending point for the meeting. Wow, and it's right at eight thirty. I mean, this is, uh, pretty amazing, huh? So, so, uh, any closing thoughts before we go?
Richard, the one that I met, wanted to bring up earlier, maybe it's not a bad idea to conclude on. I don't know if it was Jeff Clements or who said it, but, uh, one thing to keep in mind when we're talking to legislators, or anybody for that matter, city council, whoever it might be, this is the one issue, campaign finance, i.e. Twentieth Amendment, that both parties can agree on. Uh, there isn't any question that this is something that rank and file, Republicans and Democrats can agree on, and it really ought to be a unified issue.
Yeah, that's right. Everybody knows how to save chat. If you wanna save the chat for some of the emails or whatever, does anybody not know how to save a chat? Good, we all know how to do that. It just, it, it just pops into your, uh, folder for you. Uh, yes, Marnie?
I just have to end the meeting because there's another call right now.
Okay, right now. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Marnie. Thank you, everybody. We'll be in touch.